Started with our next workshop. My name is Laura Zork. I am the National Director of Education Reform for Freedom Works. We are working on a lot of dynamic solutions that we can bring parents across the country. And so today, we are going to walk through some of those solutions of what we see that are working because we know that this is a group of action takers right here in this room. I know that this is my, my third time being at this event and I tell you, when we, when staff, when we talk about events that we put on our calendar, this is one that we love coming to because, you know, as organizations and think tanks, we go out to these events and a lot of times the events, we, we talk a lot, right? Well, we come to this event and guess what happens? Not only do we talk, but the people in this room take action. And that's what it's about, right? We're tired of going to these events. We're tired of having these fancy dinners, these fancy locations. We provide our resources and then it leaves, it's left there. But in order for us to take back our school boards, take back education in America, it's going to take each and every one of us to work together and take action. So that's what we're going to walk, walk through right now. Obviously, our, our website's parentsknowbest.com, so I encourage you to go there. We have a lot of fantastic resources I'm going to walk you through, but let's just get started. All right. They said this works. Hold on once. There we go. So about best, so we are Freedom Works and I'm not going to talk a lot about Freedom Works because one of the fantastic colleagues of mine, Reverend C. L. Bryant, is going to talk a little bit more about Freedom Works, but I'm going to talk to you today about what we're doing and what we're seeing that is successful. So at Freedom Works, as the Director of Education Reform, my mission is to get parents, get concerned Americans elected to school board because we know through the pandemic, through all the chaos that we went through, that these decisions that are being made are being made, excuse me, at the local level. So that's why it's important for us to elect the right people to these positions. Now, when I talk about running for school board, when I talk about serving on the school board, I talk about it from my personal experience because I was on the school board, I was on the school board from 2016 to 2020 in a little area in Florida, Indian River County, Vero Beach, Florida is where I actually live with my husband and my four children. My oldest daughter's 30 and my youngest is 14. And I have been a mom activist since, for a long time, let's say that. I've had a child now in public education for about 25 years, so I've seen a lot of changes. And so today, I'm going to talk to you not as someone from Washington DC that's just going to come in here and spout off all these ideas, these ideas that I'm going to share with you are actually from experience. So not only do we want to get the right people elected to school board, but what else do we have to do? At the same time that we're trying to save those kids in our public school system, we have to have a mechanism. If these school board members are not going to listen to us, what do we have to do? We have to get these kids out of these broken systems. We have to get them into a learning environment where we know that they're getting educated and we know that it's safe away from these ideologies and all this curriculum. So we work across the country on legislative reform because we feel that the money should follow the student and should not follow a system that's, that's not working for our kids, right? So we do work on that. So today, let's go ahead and dive into why I am here. I'm here to give you some just practical training. So volunteers, few and far between, right? Or we have volunteers that want to do something, but they just don't know what to do. So I want to talk to you because I know we have a lot of group leaders in here. And, and I'm going to talk to you about ways that I'm seeing that you could be helpful in the movement in helping our parents. In a way that we're going to do that, well, first of all, who's going to help us? Who do we need? We need every mom, dad, grandparent, concerned American who is willing, who can give us their time to help us support our school board members or here in Pennsylvania, our school board directors. We need your help on local committees and we need your help right now in this great state to help these school board candidates who have filed, who has said, "I'm going to step up to the plate. I'm tired of what's going on." And if you are running for school board and you filed your petitions and, and you're in this room right now, I want you to stand up. This is awesome. Okay. Stay standing because this is about you. This training that I have today is about you. What I, it, just very briefly, because I don't have that much time, because I want you all to look around, the people that are standing up right now, this is who needs your help. So if you're running for school board, I'm going to start over here. I want you to say your name and what district you're running in and I want you to project it out very loud so everyone can hear because these are the people that you need to be supporting and I'll talk about how you can support them. So I'll start over here.
(inaudible)
All right. Fantastic. So, so I'm hoping that if you do not know these individuals, that you will go out of your way, especially if you live in that area, you will go up to them and you will introduce yourself and you all get to know each other because there's a lot of work to be done right now. Because with your primary right around the corner, right? May 16th. What does that mean? We're right now, we're absentee ballots are going out. Hey, C. L., how are you? So we are right now in that period and we heard through some of the, the individuals that were talking yesterday, that they won their election on day of election, but where they did not get the vote, where did, they did not earn that was through the absentee ballots, the mail-in ballots. So right now is the time that these candidates need your support. We need to be having Super Saturdays. We need to be having fantastic Fridays where you all are out there going door to door, working with these candidates and making sure that your neighbors know who to, who to vote for. Now, I'm going to tell you, as a former school board member and a candidate, my husband was on the county commission. Now, everybody knew who the county commissioners were, right? Nobody knew who the school board director candidates were. Nobody really cared. So what would happen is from the, the top of the ballot down, when they got down to the school board, people, either it was an under vote, they did not vote, or they just didn't really know who to vote for. That's why it's so important for every group leader in here to make sure that you are letting your neighbors know, letting your community know, who are those right school board members or directors that we need to get elected to these school boards. And I'm going to tell you, if you want your local school districts to change, you're going to have to do some work now. You're going to have to get the right people elected. And now is that time. But one other area, I have a lot of homework for you, so don't worry about not having enough homework from me. There's another way that we have to get engaged and I hear this across the country because I just had a school board member training that, that we gave in Scottsdale, Arizona. Out in Arizona this year, we had about 36 candidates that we trained that got elected. And this is dynamic. It was huge for this area to have 36 candidates in Maricopa County get elected to school board. Well, guess what's happened now? These individuals have gotten elected to school board. They're in there, they're challenging the superintendent, they're doing their homework, they're getting crucified, they're getting crucified by the district administrators, they're getting crucified by the media. And guess what? The parents are not showing up. The same individuals that helped them get elected, they think, "Oh, we're safe now. So-and-so's in office. They're going to take care of that." What we have to continue to do, this is not, this isn't a given here, we have to continue to make an effort and be organized and show up to these school board meetings every time they have one. Because those school board directors that are in there trying to do the right thing for you are getting beat up and they need your support. And I'm going to tell you, especially in this state like Pennsylvania where it's volunteer, right? Where in Florida, it's not volunteer. You do at least get a stipend for your time that you're there. These parents are thinking, "Why in the world am I doing this? People aren't showing up. They're not supporting me. I, I'm giving up my time. I'm giving up my time with my family. I'm giving up my family vacations. Where are the people?" So guess what's happening? And I heard it because we had a training that we gave a couple of, probably about a month ago in West Chester. They're having a hard time recruiting individuals to run for school directors. Well, I'm going to tell you, what they're seeing is the community, once they get in office, they're not being supported, so they're not even wanting to put themselves through that. So if I can give you anything today for you to take with you, besides connecting with your local school board candidates, is I need every single one of you to start making an effort in showing up to these school board meetings. How many in here have been to a school board meeting? All right. I'm not going to, I'm not going to call out the ones that haven't, but it's, it's important that you get to these meetings and it's important. I, I was home, my kids were on spring break last week, so guess who showed up and sat on the front row of our school board meeting was me, right? They didn't like that, but that's okay. I went there because I knew one of our school board members who had just got reelected was being crucified. And, and so I was there so that she could see I was supporting her. And if it's nothing but that, if, if it's nothing, if you just get up there and say, you know, "So-and-so's doing a great job. We're so proud to have you on the school board." And even if it's just a positive word that you could give to these school board directors that you know are doing a good job, they need that right now. And I'm going to tell you, you need that because you need to keep those people on these boards and they, you need to make sure that they rerun. So, so we are leaving our directors on the battlefield alone. We cannot do that. But another way that you can become engaged in what's going on on the local school board is join a committee. A lot of things happen in these committees. A lot of decisions are being made in these committees. These committees, they, they come together, they meet, and then they make these recommendations to the school board. Well, guess who's not showing up for these committees? We're not. And that's why it's important for you to develop those relationships with these directors to make sure that when those committee times do come, you're someone that can be asked to sit on those. Now, I know, we're all busy, right? I, I have, I have a full family, I travel, and I'm going to tell you, sometimes I, I cause problems for myself and I ask myself, "Why, why are you even doing this?" But one of our committees just opened up on my school district with my kids and it was the textbook review committee, right? And they were looking for a parent to sit on that committee. So I volunteered to sit on that textbook committee. Well, I just got the agenda yesterday and I see everyone else that's sitting on this committee with me. The superintendent had appointed the three top teacher union reps to sit on the committee. You know, we have some other liberal parents. We have the NAACP that's sitting on this committee. And then you have two conservative parents that are going to be sitting on this committee. But you know what? We have to have our voice on these committees because even though I know they're not going to go my way on a lot of this, I can expose it, right? I can at least be the voice for it. And that's what we have to do. We always think, "Oh, well, we're not going to get anything done if we're not the majority." I'm going to tell you, I was on the school board. I wasn't always the majority, but just by being on the school board or being on these committees and being able to expose this stuff to your community, making it transparent, that's how you start the momentum in your community. So that is something that I would highly recommend is to join one of these committees. Now, what I do want to offer you all, we have fantastic trainings that we do. So our school board candidate toolkit, we have them out here on the table. I encourage you, pick these up. I know if your, your election's right around the corner, there might be some nuggets in there that you can be very helpful to you right now. These trainings that we offer, we do them in person and/or you can join us on Tuesday nights and at Tuesday night at 7:00 PM Eastern, you can jump on for candidates that we have right now. We have a school board training coming up Tuesday night and this is what you need, is fundraising to the finish line, right? Because we need that money to do those postcards, to buy those flip cards so that you can hand them out at the doors. So I encourage you to stop by the table and we'd love to give you these toolkits so that we can be helpful to you. So, but, all right. Let's try this. Oh, there we go. So let's talk about as being an activist, as being a candidate and a good director. What is the first thing that we really need to understand? What is the roles and what is the responsibilities of the school board director? Now, what we've seen, and I know for everyone that's been in to these school board meetings, what we see is the superintendent tells the board what to do, right? And why is that? Why do you think that is? It's common, it's across the country. Well, I'm going to tell you what it is after serving on the school board and seeing, I'm going to give you the answer, is that our school board directors do not understand the law. And our superintendents have been trained at these superintendent workshops that they go to on how to basically manipulate school boards to get their way. Now, we're just catching up to that, especially with our, our Pennsylvania School Board Association, right? Do you think they, they go there and they learn on how to be, set academic goals and district priorities based on what the board wants? Do you think when they go to these association meetings with the, the state board, that they train them on how to establish policy or how to hire and fire the right superintendent? I'm going to tell you, when I, I was served as the, the chairman of the school board my last two years and when I got appointed, I, I thought, "Okay, I, I need some training for this." So I went for my very first time to one of these association meetings. I was warned, but I thought, "You know what? I need, I do need some help." So I went. So there were 67 other chairmen sitting around that were newly appointed and the person that led the training said that the goal of the chairman is, is to support the superintendent. The superintendent is the lead educator in your school district and you need to support him or her so that they can be successful. That, that's what they told me my goal as the chairman was. And I thought, "Oh, boy. I'm not going to be a very good chairman, am I?" Because I knew that wasn't going to happen. But they, they also gave us training on, "You need to make sure there's no surprises for your superintendent. You need to make sure that you have a unanimous vote and you support your district staff." And it was very biased training. So when we look at what's happening across the country with these decisions that are being made and we go to our school board director and we don't like what's happening, a lot of times we hear, "Well, the superintendent's doing this," or, you know, and they always put it back on the superintendent. And that's why as activists, as parents, as grandparents, as community members, we say, "Look, this is what the state statute says. This is your job. This is your, what you took your oath and these are your duties." And so sometimes it's going to take us to educate our school board directors, but it's also going to be very helpful when you're a candidate, when you're out on the campaign trail and someone comes up and says, "I'll vote for you if you can fire that coach." Well, we know that school board directors can't get into the day-to-day and we can't do that stuff. Instead of saying, "I can't do that," you can politely refer back to what the state statute says that you can do. So it's very important that you understand what the general tasks and duties of your school board directors are because you're going to use that to your benefit. Let's see, did I? All right. So this here, this is very important because we know we need volunteers, but there's other areas that right now that I want to help you all with and that's on how to become a lobbyist. Now, when I started battling Common Core back in 2012, I didn't, I was learning this as a parent, but what I did learn as a parent and as a school board member, as you think about it, in education, there's a lot of money to be made, right? Well, who's lobbying at our state Capitol for our kids? Who's, who's lobbying?
The unions.
Teacher unions. Who else? I can't hear?
Textbook creators.
Textbook creators, yes. We have our superintendent's associations that are up there. There's administrator associations up there. There's our Pennsylvania School Board Association up there. And there's another, and I did sit on the board of directors, so I can personally say this, our Parent Teacher Association, PTA, they're up there and they're lobbying and they're representing parents and students. Well, we know that the PTA is one of the most liberal, slanted parent associations that's in this country, so we have to be very careful. And that's why, because we have all these paid associations up there, we have to, we don't have a choice. We have to learn how to lobby for our kids, right? What's happened right now in our country? We have ignored the fact that the power that we have, we're not using it. When we talk to our legislators and we go in and we talk to them about what's going on in the classroom, about the curriculum, about the mandates, who do you think they want to hear from? They want to hear from the parents. Because they know the parents are actually experiencing, having the, the knowledge of what's really going on. When it comes time that you've supported a piece of legislation, and we'll talk about that here in a second, who do you think they want testifying on a piece of education legislation? They want the parents testifying, but where are the parents? I'm going to tell you, if parents aren't there most of the time because they don't know they need to be there. And that's why as group leaders, we need to train our parents on, on what to do, on how to lobby and legislate for smart policy and for legislation. So we're going to walk through that, but I'm going to tell you, we have a fan, again, a training that we give on how to lobby your legislators, but we always think about lobbying legislators, but who else do we lobby? Who else can we lobby? We can lobby our school board, school boards. We can lobby our school board directors because we need to lobby for smart policy, right? And, but we need to learn how to do that. So let's, let's get started here. I want you to understand, one of the first steps that you need to take if you're looking at lobbying for a policy, lobbying for a piece of legislation, is you have to know the who, what, when, where, and why's. And I know that's, that's a lot, but we really have to understand who we are, what's our strengths, what's our weaknesses, how much time we have, and really understand what it takes to get really organized so that we can, we can pass some smart legislation. So a lot of times, you know, like I said, we talk about legislation, but there are things that we can do on the local level and pass policy. I think Buck County has some really great policies that they have passed. So these are the type of things that you want to learn from. When you have other counties and other school districts that are passing good pieces, or school boards that are passing good pieces of policy, you want to be able to take that over into your school board and making sure that they understand what's being done. So the next step I want, I want to talk to you about is in order to pass policy or in order to pass legislation, you really need to understand who are those decision-makers? Now, when we're talking about the school board, you know, there's nine school board members, right? That's, so you, you should be able to go in there and you should be able to identify, "Okay, who are, who are a couple of these school board directors that I could work with?" Start developing those relationships with these individuals. You need to reach out to them and even if you've not, if you're not perfectly aligned, sometimes you can find things that you do have in common. And I know in Pennsylvania, with your legislators, with you not having the majority, it's, it's difficult to get some things passed, especially through your, your governor. But what I really want to encourage you to do is when we're talking about lobbying your legislators today, I want you to really start thinking about, "How can I lobby our school board?" So get to know who those individuals are that you feel that you can start working with. with. And I'm going to tell you, this is always underestimated. The number one person in that school board director's office is going to be the person that answers that phone. So that might be the executive secretary, you know, it might be the receptionist. Because if you can't get past, to even get an appointment, you're not going to get anything done. So I always want you to remember, your first impressions is always going to be with that staffer or with that receptionist. So be mindful of that. And I think the time on the back has went down, and I don't see how much time I have. Okay. Here, we can be as planned and organized, and we can have the greatest piece of legislation, but if we do not have the support of the local community, other parents, we are not going to be able to push legislation, right? So it's important that before, because everyone's busy, before we go to our activists and say, hey, we have this piece of legislation, it's very well-written, so-and-so has passed it in another county, but you're not planned and you go to these volunteers, you're going to lose them if you don't have a plan. So on day one, when you start getting your volunteers together, you need to have that plan very precise, very put together. Now, one thing I want to say, everyone, and this is hard for us sometimes, everyone has a place, right? We should be trying to find a place for everyone. This isn't a time for us to be very picky, oh, that person talks too much, or, you know, I don't like the way that person looks. No, we need to make sure that every single person has a place whenever we're trying to advocate and push policy and legislation. Now, with our volunteers, these are the type of things that I want you to start thinking about when you're looking at organizing your grassroots. You know, what type of jobs are you going to give them? So who's going to be that point person? If the media contact wants to contact someone to talk about the initiative that you're pushing, who's that point of contact? Another area is group presenters. You know, once you come up with your plan, once you're wanting to push your piece of legislation or policy, you're going to have to get out to other groups so that you can get them to start working with you. So you're going to have to start looking at who among our volunteers is going to be a good presenter, someone that we can send out to give an overview of what our goals are. Who are those volunteers that are going to be good for showing up and giving public comment, public testimony, public comment at school board meetings, testimony at the Capitol? Who are those individuals that you can bring into your mix? A lot of times, senior citizens. I always hear this, oh, I don't have kids, I don't know, I don't know how to help. I'm going to tell you, senior citizens are the best when it comes to researching. So make sure that you have someone that can continuously pass you over research and stay on top of what the media and what other things are being reported. But then you have some that might be stay-at-home moms, and they're extremely busy with the kids all day long, they don't have time to do research, but they might be those social media influencers. So you have to make sure that everyone in your group or you come across that says, I want to help, you need to be ready. You need to be ready to give them something that they can help on. All right. Sorry about this, guys. All right, sorry about this. So let's talk about, you know who your legislators are, you know the policy that you want to pass, you know who your volunteers are, you're meeting with your legislators, you're not getting anywhere, we got to think about, okay, what's that next step? All right? If they're ignoring you, we got to take it to that next step. If you can't even get that meeting, then we're going to have to unleash the power of having our own earned media. And this is something that a lot of our activists aren't doing, so this is something I want to encourage you to do. Step number five is, you're going to have to learn how to lobby through the media. I know a lot of us don't trust the media, but we have to learn how to utilize them to our own advantage. And the way that we're going to do that, we're going to start our own letters to the editor campaign. How many group leaders we have in here? How many letters to the editor campaigns have you all started? Do we have any in here? Okay. So one way that we have learned is that a lot of times, people just don't know about the issues. Well, in order for us to educate our community, this is a free way that we can let our voice be heard, because a lot of times the media's just not going to write about the issue, is that we are going to organize our own letters to the editor campaign. Typically, it's about 200, 250 words of what you can submit, so the group leader needs to really look into this. But also, you know, this is the time that if you could get these letters written, this is a time you can do your call to action. If you're trying to get a policy passed, if you can't get even a meeting with a legislator or with your director, you're going to do a call to action. You're going to say, we have these issues, and we want to meet with XYZ, but we can't get into, see them. Well, guess what's going to happen? As elected officials, they pay attention to these type of things, and they don't want that showing up. But another great way, if you do, if you are someone that likes to do the research, and if you like, if you're a writer and you like to write, another great way is to identify individuals within your volunteer base that can submit opinion editorials. These are fantastic because they, it's a way that you can get it pushed out on social media. It really gets to these legislators when they start reading the letters to the editor, when they start reading these opinion pieces. So you need to identify in your group who can be that person. But one mistake, a lot of times, we have groups that start doing this, and they're having a hard time getting them placed. And so when I take a look at them, some of the problems that I'm seeing is, a lot of times, you know, the individuals that are first time trying to write a letter or opinion piece to the editor, it's just chucked with a ton of research, right? It's like they're writing a research paper. No, these editors are really looking for opinion, op-eds. So the best op-eds is taking your experience, taking a really strong opinion or position on something, and putting that into 700 to 750 words. They are, if you're not getting your opinion op-eds placed, it's because it's chucked with too much fact, and they want a little bit more opinion in it. So... But this is probably one of the most successful things that we've seen parents do, that has been one of our action steps, is hosting press conferences. Now, what we have learned is because the left do not want us there, so when you're looking at hosting a press conference or hosting a rally, there's a huge difference. I'm going to tell you what that is here in a second. But if you, I'm going to recommend that all of you, when you're starting to legislate your issue, when you're trying to push your policy, when you want to get your, the community informed, it's time for you to host a press conference. I'm going to encourage you to do a press conference, not a rally. The way you're going to get the media there is, your first step is to write a press release. I gave you an example exactly how to lay it out. It doesn't have to be, it needs to be in this written formal process, but you could be the group leader of XYZ. It does not have to come from an organization. It just needs to have a teaser of what's going to be talked about at the press conference, who's going to be there. Because we want to make sure that the press is there in orders you can get your message out to your community. One good thing about a press conference is, when you say you're hosting a rally, and you know you don't have the support yet, but you have to put off the perception that you have the support, right? When you host a press conference, they're not expecting 100 people there. When you're hosting a press conference, if you can get 15 to 20 parents there, community members, to stand in the background, that is a good start. So press conferences are very easy to give off the perception that there's a lot of support, even though you know you don't have the support yet, and you know you're having this press conference because you're trying to get the support. This is a way that you can have a good perception. But you always want to make sure that you wrap up your press conference with a call to action. You never want to have a press conference without having, okay, what's that next step? So you and the organizers, you need to work with that. But I'm going to tell you what I love about holding a press conference. What we've learned is that you can hold a press conference on the Capitol steps or your courthouse steps, and you don't fall underneath the same rules if you're a host in a rally. A lot of places, because they don't want you there, they'll tell you, you have to have a permit if you're going to have a rally. They might tell you that you have to have law enforcement there if you're going to have a rally. They tell you that, you know, they have just so many restrictions on having a rally. Well, what we've learned as parents, that we can go to the Capitol, say, we're going to host a press conference, and we don't have all these rules and regulations that we typically would have if we said we're going to have a rally. But this is another cool part of having a press conference, is that typically, they will offer you the microphone, the podium, the flags, because you're having a press conference. They would never do that if you were having a rally. So there's a lot of benefit in activists, if you're wanting to really push out an issue by not calling it a rally anymore, we want to call it a press conference. So what I'm just going to encourage you, we have to stay empowered. And how do we stay empowered? We keep coming to things like this. We have to stay united, because when we get out there, we get beaten down. A lot of times, we feel like we're alone, but we have to continue to show up to things like this. We have to show up at our school board meetings. We have to get there. We, and I see some of our candidates here. We're going to have to show up, and we're going to have to help volunteer for our candidates. And we're going to have to get outside of our comfort zone and keep speaking up. Even when it's uncomfortable and they call us names and they don't want us there, we have to continue to show up, right? So I hope that if anything, you all will come by our table, pick up our lobbying toolkit, pick up our school board candidate toolkit. Because right now, we feel like what we're seeing across the nation, these are the ways that we're really going to be able to move the needle on what's happening, is through legislation, policy, and making sure that we get the right individuals elected to school board. Because you think about it right now, our second and third graders, they're eight years old about right now, if we don't do something, if we don't do something, you think about in 10 years, when these individuals who are going through all this indoctrination start getting registered to vote. I really feel that the time is now. If we do not step up and we do not change it within these next few years, like Ronald Reagan said, we're one generation away, right? And I honestly feel, and I see, that this is that generation that they're after. So that's why I encourage each and every one of you to do something. And I have time for maybe two questions. Do we have any questions? Nope. Well, that's good. That means I explained it very well. So anyways, meet us back there on the, at the lobby, and I'd love to talk to you one-on-one. Thank you.